I will call us to order at 7:31.
Oh, what guest?
Reception of guests. He says without a trace of sarcasm. Agenda revisions, anything to add, change?
I would like to make a revision. Add a 3.2 Act 46. I don't think it has to be extensive, but...
Any other agenda revisions? Public comments and correspondence? And we're done. Approve the minutes of 5:21 18.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of 5:21 18.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? None of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, no, thank you. Onto 3.1 Board Goals.
So we made the motion?
So I'll make a motion, but before I make the motion, I would just offer, from my perspective, some clarification that even though I'm going to make a motion to adopt these three goals as our own, I don't mean it to be exclusive of if we... I don't want lots of goals, but if we had an additional goal that was important to us, we could certainly decide to do that. I'm not saying we need to be limited to these three, but my motion will be to adopt the supervisory union board goals as East Montpelier Elementary School District Board Goals.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Is there any discussion of the board goals?
I had a question, Marcy. So should our calendar is very similar to this? So that it was goal-oriented, right? And it's very similar to these goals anyways. Should I change that language to reflect this?
In terms of building your work plan?
Well, I think community engagement was already in there.
Yeah, the three goals are very similar. They're very similar. It's just the wording is different.
I just changed the...
I support changing the wording.
Okay, alright.
Sure.
And I also, as part of the discussion, support what Stephen said.
Yeah, me too.
Because we're not limited to these, but these are the main goals in concert... With the SU more.
And then, the only other comment I had was that we had a... We didn't really talk about it at the full board meeting, but we had a lengthy discussion at the executive committee about that we would be at liberty, at least in Goal 2, for the quality committee, and I wanted your input on being able to change... It'd be interesting what Alicia has to say and what the board has to say in changing the timeline of the...
Do the goals have a timeline or...?
Well, Goal 2 has a suggested timeline, and we... They gave us the liberty to change it as needed, but I don't want to, you know, neither of us want to do that without... It was left to the quality committee to change it as needed, but we also... I don't want to make any recommendation without touching base with you.
I would be very comfortable for our board giving the quality... School Quality Committee the same leeway that the executive committee did. Essentially, what the executive committee did is we recognized that they were the content experts, and they'd been working with it. And if an adjustment in the timeline made sense to them because of the work they're doing, we would accept that, and that these timelines were just intended to be...
Okay.
Guides.
Guidelines. What's the Pirates of the Caribbean and the Pirate's Code is more like guidelines than a law.
We just wanted to move them a little bit so they align better with what we're doing, so not wait until January to...
Okay.
Any further discussion of the board goals? All of those in favor of adopting the board goals as moved by Steve, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Thank you. Act 46.
So I asked to put it on. I mean, the next time there's a meeting to discuss us, it'll be a full board. So I don't have a lot that I felt like I needed to say, but it made sense that perhaps we at least have a brief discussion of what we've read and what anyone wants to say, so that when we head into the full board, it's something at least we've touched on. I act... And since I made the motion, I guess I'll start the conversation. And I still think we should have the meeting, but I agreed with a lot of what Susan had to say, that really this is a recommendation, and we're really not going to know anything until November.
Right, when the report comes out.
But as the way I was with Act 46 the whole time, I think what we should think about between now and June, and where we should spend some of our time in June on, is coming up with a timeline. So that, you know, this is when the Board of Education's going to be in the June, considers it, and it's reasonable to assume that the Board of Education might, like the AOE did, provide an opportunity for the SU to do another pitch, or respond, or whatever, so that we would need to do things, I think, in June to say, if the Board of Education wants a response, who would provide that response? What would be the makeup of that group? It might be the same group, but, you know, structurally, we would have in place a scheme and a timeline on who would respond, what the response would be, when the response would be, if action was required, where we might fit it in, those kind of things. And then even thinking, okay, we're going to hear something one way or another in November, so we should... Should we make some preparations to meet additionally once that's done? Because it's budget season, it's reasonable consume, we might need another meeting to, you know. So for me, that's the real purpose of the June meeting. I know a lot of people have opinions and voice, you know, pro and con and all that, but for me, the June meeting really should be about organizing, so that we just have a plan to move forward. It doesn't say what we're going to do.
And until the Board of Education has it, well, I mean, they have it, but it's now up to them to make a decision. They're not going to make a decision that by next month, you have to done blah blah blah. But one thing I'd like to avoid is any kind of, coming out of the June meeting, a little group of people writing another response, or big paper, anything prematurely. We need to just sit back and see, because I don't think, and this is just a little Pollyanna me, but I don't think they're going to meet and say, by July 1, 2019, you have to have all this in place, because budgeting and all of that is such a big deal in schools that there... I believe there will be.
That's not what they said. So they're going to provide us with articles of agreement, and we have to be operational by July 1, 2019. So there's no...
But the Board of Education hasn't acted on it yet. That's what the AOE said. Now it has to go to the Board of Education.
But in November, if they say you'll merge, you'll be merged by July of 19.
By July, that's not changing, because it's been written into law. So that those deadlines are... We have no... We would have to go into lobbying to change that, but not the Articles of Agreement, because that's something they came up later with.
This board was in favor of consolidation, so...
Yeah, but I do, I agree with...
But there's a lot of devil in the details of those articles.
Oh, I was going, I think there's a tie.
Yeah. And Donna had a meeting where she kind of explained some of the ones that they were recommending, and they... I haven't seen them. I don't know if you've seen them. I don't know that they're all...
No, but the point is, they're not asking us to develop them. They'll develop them and say, these are what you're doing.
That's like the part that we lost by not... We gave up that chance. We can add, but I agree with Stephen and with Lindy, what she was saying. I was in the June meeting as just planning and having, you know, the group go and present to the Board of Education. I think it would be a mistake to change our message to the Board of Education because of what we receive right now. We have to stand behind us united with what we put forward and do the best we can to convince them of that that's the best course for our district. And then, if they come back in November and they say, no, we can still be doing, you know, work before...
Is there an opportunity for going before them, before November?
There is, yeah, there is. There is a... The Board of Education is going to be meeting between June and October, and it's going to be similar to what we did with the department.
But they haven't set aside like a meeting for all these groups that they told after, or have they?
They have, but I don't know the schedule. Yeah, they haven't invited specifically yet, but I know that that's what... That's their intent, because they don't want to look like they're just rubber stamping what it was sent to them. So we would have that opportunity, and I, you know, I really think that it would be a mistake to change because of what we hear right now. Now we move away, that would be a mistake.
Well, I agree, despite the way we felt.
But that would be up for the public to do, not the boards to do. If the public came forward with some uprising, but they wouldn't go to the board.
They wouldn't...
It would be more about lobbying their legislators or something, I don't know.
No, but I guess somebody could go to the board, but it...
The public outcry might, but...
I don't see that happening.
But the question is, what would the public outcry be over?
Yeah.
Right? So, I mean, one of the things that... That fettered our discussions was that we had to be within the law. So there were very specific constraints around debt and stuff. So the state board has a lot more flexibility in building those Articles of Agreement than the Act 46 committee had, for better or worse.
And they have quite a few that they said have to do that from this process.
Yeah, and I, you know, I...
And they did call out that community engagement is important, whether that's just a way to duck responsibility for...
Yeah, I think that was just like, you know... I won't say what I thought about that comment, but... So we would plan on being a planning meeting on June?
Well, I mean, that's the direction I'll try to drive. I mean, certainly, there are going to be people that want to get up and talk, and, you know, I don't expect Matthew's going to try to prevent that. And, you know, people make impassioned pleas and... But anyway, from... I don't expect to hear anything I haven't heard. So for me, I think the value of that is, you know, a plan and a structure. Because just like how we were going to respond to the AOE, rather than each board doing their own individual work, I mean, I think what we could potentially agree on is a similar group to carry the same message to the Board of Education. That here's what our request is, it hasn't changed. The agency of education didn't support it, but that's still how we feel. And then, in November, if it's supported, then it's just dead, we don't have to do anything. If it's not supported, then we should have some thoughts and some structure on. If it's not supported, then on this day in November, or this day in December, we'll have a full board meeting to discuss and respond, or begin to talk about what's going to happen.
I agree.
Because potentially, it could be a very ugly year.
Yeah. I was, you know, I was not completely surprised. I was heartbroken, just because I see how we are moving in all those directions, that we all are being so productive, and we have all this, that this again would be another destruction of the work that we're doing, and, you know, it's just like...
Flor, you're a very positive person. I mean, I look at the policy committee stuff, and I look at the goal stuff. One board doesn't think they can support these goals, the three goals for their own.
But I think they're changing.
And some districts want to go their own way on policies.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all I... I just... That's what I'll push for, is a timeline and a plan.
I agree.
Reports to the board?
Anyone have any questions about this one?
That was huge. It was awesome. Just like, it was a lot of work.
Last month, because we did the data presentation, so I felt like...
I had my notes in my computer.
Support the last month, there was a lot to study on.
But I was just really excited to see, you know, the amount of meetings that you have had with teachers, and I was just like, when?
After April break until graduation, there is really not a minute in the day that's not scheduled, and overscheduled, and double-scheduled, but... So it tells me you're busy.
So it's not a question, but I don't know if it's a question. One of the... I'm trying to find my notes out on the computer, my computer just died. You say you have enough data already for kids coming in in the summer of that reteach part for the summer? From... Is it taking account the loss that we have in the summer? Or is that just from the data we have right now? Where to start?
Full year's data.
Okay.
So what we do at the end of the year, so all of our Sback results are in, they're embargoed until June 15th, but they're in, so we can look at them. And we did a comparison between our Star 360 across the year results and Sback. The hope was that it would be correlated period, and it is, which is great. So it means next year, it will be a good predictor, because this is the first year we use Star 360 reading in and that. So it'll be a nice predictor in the fall and the winter for those students and how they perform and how to provide interventions. So what we've done most recently is just look at all of the data, identify those students who have kind of been on the fence, in the yellow, we call it, those who aren't significantly below, but those who are not meeting this standard. And came up with a plan for every one of those students, how will we address their needs, and what will that look like? And we call it Quick Start in the fall, where the month of September is typically a month where we do beginning of year assessments and don't have reteach intervention blocks. Those students will have interventions starting with day one. And we've done that for the last couple of years, but I feel like our data is getting better each year, so that we can really identify the kids.
And those are the kids you tend to see have a summer slump.
Yes.
So getting them cooked in, kicked in like a...
They would, okay.
So we use the results based on spring. When we give the assessments in the fall, a lot of them have regressed some. But we still know that in the spring, they need those interventions. We have some students, so if a student is on a plan, they can participate in summer services, so it doesn't need to just be a child on an IUP, which is great. We have kids who have, who are on like EST plans, who need interventions, who will participate in summer, which we hope will help with the summer slide.
And the last question, there was one bullet about homework. You have buy-in from... Maybe that's not the right...
So it's fascinating. Today, we did the communication PPE module, which was around getting on the same page with a communication home with families. And when I showed the school-wide results, I gave each teacher their own results. So the survey asked parents to identify their child's classroom teacher, and the teacher got just those results. But I showed school-wide data, is very similar to homework, so we are not in alignment. And the goal is that we will be in alignment next year. So whether that's safe for homework, and typically, I can say, we've come up with, I shared the agreement that we came up with. Basically, children in grade kindergarten through second get no homework. Or their homework is to go home and play games with their family, read a book with your family, you know, that level. Grades three through six, there's been, it's all over the place, depending on the teacher. And it has been, and we do have agreement to be more in alignment.
Because this doesn't really, your agreement, or your, whatever it is.
That does not, I, no, that's more of a philosophy.
Right.
Which it took a lot of time to get us to be on the same page.
That's what I was wondering.
But the specific agreements around, you know, say there's the 10-minute rule, right? No more than 10 minutes per grade. So if you're in fourth grade, you should never have more than 40 minutes. So it's that type of an agreement. Another agreement in... So we had some classrooms who had large projects. Those of you who have had children, have seen these projects. We talked a lot about those, what's the purpose of those? Who really is doing that work? Which is in that statement, right? It needs to be done independently for those students. It should not be, you know, the entire family spending 40 hours, because not every family can do that. And what happens is, you see in the product, a huge discrepancy, and that's not fair.
Once you go to the Home Depot and buy all the materials to build their medieval castle...
Some spend hundreds of dollars, some can't, you know, spend $10. So it's really, we talked, it was a lengthy conversation that went across a number of sessions, specifically in grades four through six. And then there's other things that we talked about, you know, finding that middle ground, because we have teachers who really believe strongly in those, and compromising, and maybe there's one take-home kind of assignment core or something.
Well, I think you're saying that questioning why? What is the purpose? Because if there's not an educational purpose that comes out of the diorama, or the house, or the whatever, then questioning just because we've done it for 25 years, educationally may not be, and just because parents are expecting, oh, when my kid gets to this grade, we're going to do this. So I think asking those why questions is really important of the staff.
Yes.
Yes, not at...
But the other thing is, we have parents who that is... They were used to a traditional experience, they were used to that kind of homework, and they believe that their children should have that kind of homework. So there is a, there's definitely parents who believe that those castle projects are really what should be happening, so it's working with that, too.
Yeah.
I mean, there are...
They do look fun.
There are definitely...
Your mom loved building boats.
They're fun if you have the time and bandwidth and all of that to do that. They, I can see it being a real challenge for a child to navigate that if they don't have the same support.
You're in a single parent home, and not work nights, and you're never...
Right, that's really hard.
Right? It makes it so that we provide opportunities for those things to happen at school, not be homework, but it's still not the same.
And have the materials. Because if I do toothpicks and marshmallows, and you have bricks and mortar.
Yeah, yeah, like the bridge project that they used to do, and they're building it at school.
Everything is provided.
Yeah.
Even the tribal boards, which sounds silly, but not all families can do that. So those are the kind of details that we worked out, that, you know, as unit teams, we had to come to an agreement, that if you are asking a child to do something, you need to provide the materials for them to do it.
And they're, I mean, you know, we talk about community engagement, but that's the kind of thing where there may be opportunity for that there. You know, maybe there are community members who would be happy to come in and help.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And we have some incredible mentors who have no ties to the school, other than being, living in the community, or working in the community, and spending time with some first students.
But it still does ask the question of why.
What's the educational reason behind it?
To just keep asking.
So we're hoping, and what I told the teachers, both around the homework and communication, because they're both touchy subjects, is that I feel like, as a staff, our culture is strong enough, we can have these difficult conversations with them. And it, and I couldn't have said that, you know, a few years ago. And they were difficult conversations. They were not, you know, nobody was, some were very unhappy about having them, and nobody was overly thrilled about them. But I think in the end, and especially the one today...
Better than them, yeah.
I showed them a pie graph of the results, and about 50% of parents are getting communicated with weekly, and about another 50% are getting communicated with maybe less than monthly. So that was eye-opening for staff who may be the ones communicating weekly and don't know, or the ones who communicate once a month and have no idea, others are sending things out so regularly, and we can't have that.
That's great, thank you.
Fiscal report?
So there's just a cover page, that basically pretty much the closed down.
It's under action.
You'll see a couple of things to highlight.
The board order.
Oh, yeah.
Is the board order going around?
No, there isn't one, because you just did one.
Oh.
Right.
Well, that's right, we just had a meeting.
We just had a couple things to...
So we're making it quick.
So we are, we hit the target of the 4% with the closed down, just finding some savings where we didn't spend fully in liquid chips, and some utilities, and pre-K tuition, we closed down that in Peter last... Stephen, you had asked a question about whether all those checks, right, in the same exact amount? That's shown on here, our final payment. And then there's a question around the technology. So last year, for this year, we had set aside a reserve of $26,000, and what has been set aside right here for next is $11,000, that bottom line.
It's in the full board packet, I think.
Yeah, it was like...
It's on page 25 of the full board packet. I don't know if there are any questions about the closed down.
I was a little confused when Lori explained it, and that was just me. So when we see, and this is just, this numbers this way, they, when she said that the...
She made it sound like we were moving a bunch of money for a lot, for big capital stuff in ours. But she added our school.
Yeah, she said some of the schools have...
It looked like we had a big deficit, but it had to do with us setting money aside. We set money aside still for the early retirement that we did. There's still money set aside for that. Yeah, it is. I think that's what Lori was talking about. You look at that money that would...
The negative signs at the bottom.
Yeah, we had the minus 154, whatever.
But she said it in the way of capital improvement, the capital that we're going to have coming down.
That's probably the way it was for most of the schools.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay.
We'll set some capital money aside pretty soon, probably.
At this point, there is, it's the future retirement, years two and three, the technology.
Thank you.
And then I have a whole bunch of things for you to sign, but that is coming next.
Yep. Having a brain, can't brain today. We don't need action on these reports, right?
No.
No?
I think by signing them, yeah.
Can I ask a question before we move into action stuff, though? So Flor, you actually believe that I listened to you and hear what you say? I don't want this to be a burden, but one of the things we're going to start looking across the SU is on helping board members understand trauma. Is that a good way to describe it? So I'm wondering, in a reasonable request, if it would make sense for our, so for our staff, to make some recommendations to the school board on what they think it would be important for us to become informed about around trauma. And so, a very casual, not hours of work, you know, it could just be, hey, here's an email, board's interested on what they should know, is anyone having... I don't care, but seemed like a good chance. We hardly ever ask the staff to, you know, what do you think we need to know? I know Flor is particularly passionate about this, but it's true. It's a topic that we're beginning to get interested on, you know, what should we know? And I think the staff might be able to provide some real good recommendations on, you know, spend some time on this, or this is what we see, or, you know, I experienced this and spend some time on this or this is what we see or, um, you know, I, I, I experienced this and found it very useful or whatever. Help, help us inform. Our way forward.
Just a question for you. I know the first thing they're going to say, um, is the. And, and learning about the ACE scores and what that means. I mean, I, I know that that is, there's other things and I'll, I'll bring this to them and share with you. But that was the, so you talked round and round about this last month.
There's a, there's a commitment to address it. I don't think it's going to get addressed in the. The problem is, the reason I bring it up is it, it might be something that we want to be proactive on at a local board level. Or we could just say, hey, Eastmont Pilier has decided we want to move on this topic. This is what we're doing. This is when we're doing it. Any other board or community members are welcome.
I would suggest, we have the film, Washington Central. I would suggest you just set up a time and watch it.
Without a facilitator?
I would watch it. I think you can watch it multiple times and get more and different things out of it. It's a lot to take in, but it's really useful. And even if you watched it on your own, just so you're, you have that background of what people are even talking about. That would be my recommendation.
There's also a YouTube video from Dr. Harris, is that her name? She's, she's in it and she has a YouTube that is like twenty minutes or twenty-five minutes that is really, I can send the link around.
Film, you will find trailers on it and you'll find, um, and I think is a place to, so that is as a, as a entire staff of WCSU, that's where we started and, and I think it's a good place to start.
I just don't want to jump to a solution without, I know you're confident and I'm sure that's what we'll hear. It's not often that I think of the staff. It's a funny thing to say, but from an advice perspective. And I, I think, I, I just think it's a way to respect them for their knowledge. Or at least their realization of where the problems are, even if they have no clue on what to do. And then hear from them to help us decide how we're gonna.
I'm happy to ask them for specifics and, and the only other thing I would say to you that I know that they would agree with is your support financially. So we were in a situation in the fall where we had numerous students who had, of trauma backgrounds, severe trauma backgrounds. You saw the day-to-day behavior at the beginning of the year. And they came needing a lot of support and you provided that, right? We had to add staff to support those children. And I think just your awareness of and knowing when, when I come to you and speak, because staff have come to me enough and I have seen that there is this need and just having that kind of a understanding that those of you who are in the building see the need, but those of you who aren't, you know, can appreciate that we don't go to that last resort until it's a last resort. That's something that I support. We need your support in that. But I will ask them for other specifics, but my just off the top of my head, I think that resilience is a great starting place.
Is WCSU doing the Alice?
So the, the principals will be.
The reason I brought that up, thinking of the boards is in our district where I work, they had all the board members trained in the Alice, which is the lockdown stuff. I thought that was kind of odd personally, but the teachers are all getting trained before school starts. And it's, it's the buzz. I mean, it's the big thing and what you're supposed to do for threats. But I thought it was interesting that they had the board and I'm wondering if it's so that the board understands if there's financial ramifications, why, you know, if they've been trained, they may understand. Everyone in our district jokes because the minute it's brought up, I bring up the bucket of rocks. But if we have to buy a bucket of rocks for every classroom, if you've been through the training, you would understand that. And I thought, well, maybe that's why they had the board members trained. Um, but the first time we could get all the teachers trained are those in-service days before school starts when we have that capacity.
So we're not anywhere near where Barry is with that, but it's, it's definitely been something we've been talking about that was looking into the training for principals.
Yeah, we're training embedded trainers.
And did you guys do the trauma first?
Yeah, we did a couple of years with NFI, is that who they are?
That's great. Thank you, Stephen.
So I think that was a good encapsulation of board goals, including but not, not exclusive. Okay, uh, action agenda, approve blanket authorization for check orders for FY eighteen nineteen. That's page four on our board packets. It looks like we have something to sign as well.
Yeah, so you need to all sign everywhere and then Lindy, there's a place where you need to sign as the clerk in addition. But you'll see on, oh, no.
Do, do we need to do another motion or just sign?
I think we just have to sign.
Because we already did a motion as a full board.
Now we just sign them.
No, we didn't.
You didn't do all of them, but you did.
We didn't approve a blanket authorization. We approved for the superintendent to sign documents.
But we're approving them through our signatures here.
Wouldn't hurt to do a motion.
Better save them, sorry.
Cause we, we signed the board orders, but we still approve.
Maybe could approve all of these as a slate.
Yeah, I'll make a slate.
Can I just say five point four is different?
So I'd make a slate for the three awards. Award blanket authorization for check orders, award revenue anticipation note and award investment. Uh, geez, I don't think we can do them as a blanket.
There's separate actions.
Yeah, and, and there's, you know. I would make a motion that we approve blanket authorization for check orders for FY eighteen nineteen.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. That's the one we have to sign, right?
Award the revenue anticipation note on page five.
I'll make a motion.
Oh yeah, there are, aren't there?
You got it.
Or no? Any discussion of the revenue anticipation note? All of those in favor, please say aye. Award the investment bid.
I'll make a motion.
Wait a minute, what did, what did we just, what did we just approve? Well, we have to award it to somebody.
Uh, to Community Bank.
So it would be a motion to approve the revenue anticipation note bid to Community Bank NA. Not authorized or?
Community National Bank.
There's two in Barry. And it's really confusing now.
Okay, so we've gotten through the revenue anticipation note and we are now on to the award the investment bid.
And I made the motion, so I now say the investment bid to Community Bank NA.
Darcy's second of that one. Any discussion of that one? All of those in favor, please say aye. And finally, approve reserving eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars for technology.
One of mine, clerk one is mine.
No, no, you're, it's on, you're a part of that one. So there's, this is the.
That's the board authorization.
Here's the Community National Bank tax revenue anticipation note. Is this just another? Continued on, you have to sign again. That's where Lindy has to sign this quarter. And then this is, see revenue, see, this is where I'm confused. This is, looked like the same thing.
It's an extension of the same thing, but it's not the same language.
Okay, so. So I don't see, then where's the award of bid?
It might be one page because both bids are being given to the same bank.
Always says a header of tax revenue anticipation borrowing.
So that's the tax anticipation and this one is the revenue.
They all say.
This is all.
Well, the anticipation has borrowing on it.
Is one of them the?
It's all the same thing.
Maybe they just need a whole bunch of copies.
Have to sign in the same document.
I just didn't see one for that.
While you're doing that, I'll approve the, I'll move the.
That it's something that we have to sign. I wonder if we just have to do it. See, this one says has to be signed. This one doesn't. Right here it says needs to be signed. This one we just have to pass.
First, okay, cool. I'm just gonna go with.
So we do also have a motion on the floor.
Is that the reserving?
Transfer, sorry, reserving eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars for technology.
I'll second it.
And I'm sorry, who made that motion? Did you?
I did. She was trying to sort through our documents and get us organized.
It's easy, it's easy to do. Reserving eleven thousand nine fifty-one, is that a transfer out of somewhere to somewhere or is that? From fund balance, okay.
Can someone, so fund balance versus capital?
So there's a, so it's a different line and basically, the way I think about it, and it's probably, it's a very lenient way of thinking about it. But fund balance is basically the savings account, right? Like it's what isn't spent. Capital is untouchable and it's only for capital and has to be approved by the board. Although we don't touch fund balance either without coming to, but that's the line that you always see on the bottom of the cover page. And then technology, fund balance is its own line. So we have, we didn't used to have a line for technology. We only, we would spend, now we're trying to force the ahead. Balance just for, set aside for earmark for technology.
Because we know that technology tends to be fairly cyclical. It's good to set some money aside so that when the big bill comes in four years,
We're not paying.
We don't have to find all the money for the big bill.
So last year we set aside twenty-six, six ninety-six.
And this year, and, and I don't have, oh, I can find it.
And we put, we budgeted some set aside as well.
That was it, um, instead of the bottom. So next year you're gonna see all year that eleven. But there's a, a substantial amount that's going back.
No, that's okay.
Doesn't mean eleven thousand nine hundred will be spent next year. It's just, it's put aside.
Okay, I have a motion.
One more question, sorry. And so why wouldn't we just round that up to twelve thousand versus just eleven?
Was it a percentage?
It's like a capital plan, but it's a tech plan.
It just seems like an odd number, eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-one.
It's probably a percentage of something.
It's probably a percentage or an.
That's what I was thinking.
An anticipated assessment. Or it may have been the exact number that it took to get down to a four percent fund balance. Because we do that, you know, we get these oddly specific numbers that are.
And we were, we were below four percent all through the year because of our increase in staffing needs. And that has been my goal all years to enter your bracket.
Cause I'm, and ideally it's a cross section of those two needs. But in discussion on transferring funds, are we not gonna transfer any funds to capital?
This is, this is the projected closed down.
Cause we're in a good place, capital. I want to keep making the good.
Just know that I use money from the, from the local budget, wood chip money, um, to purchase our furniture for next year. We have a lot of chairs we purchased. We, we have not purchased any chairs since way before construction. So similar to past years when there is a, a lot of money left in a line, wood chips this year. Um, rather than coming to for capital, it's used out of operating budget. So that we don't need to touch.
Rather than burning them, you built with them this year. And if we get real tight, you can burn the old chairs. Smash them up and we'll burn those for one winter. We're running out of money. Anywho.
Yeah, thanks, Ruben. Shit just shut me up. So I have a motion and a second to approve reserving eleven thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars for technology. Is there any further discussion? All of those in favor, please signify your approval by saying aye. Opposed, Epstein, thank you. We don't have a board order. Future agenda items, we have talked about act forty-six.
An input from the staff on trauma.
I wasn't paying dearly close attention. I know there's going to be another meeting in June. How is that gonna be scheduled?
He's doing a doodle poll. And he gave some dates like between June nineteenth and.
Because the executive committee is already happening, so it would be nice to not.
Yeah, there's an executive meeting on the eighteenth.
That's not the graduation. Oh, eighth grade graduation.
June nineteenth and twenty-eighth were dates he was between then.
Okay, that's good to know.
Well, and I would, I would hope that other than a few administrators for this full board meeting. You wouldn't have to be there.
No, cause it's just act forty-six.
It's good to hear though, but.
Welcome to come if you've got nothing better to do.
I can't come on the nineteenth, because it's six.
Are there other end of the year, like retirements and things that are going on?
Not, not evening between the nineteenth and the.
I just meant in general. I mean, you have people leaving.
Yes, so we will have a celebration on the twentieth. Yes, for our retirees and, um, those looking, yes. You have one tomorrow.
Yes, we do. Yes, tomorrow's the staff, not the community. Next week is the community for, our principal's been there for forty-five years. So there's a lot going on there.
They should almost be celebrated together, how many kids they have affected under life. They're so cute.
Uh, eight point O board communication. I don't think we have anything, which brings us to, I think, our favorite item, which is adjournment.
But I just wanted to do what Matt did and just thank you. She had a birthday this week too, so just thank you for all you do. We appreciate it and we know that you operate at a hundred and ninety-eight percent. With that food sometimes and, yes, so thank you. We all appreciate it.
We know it's in good hands, the school.
Absolutely, I, I know, it's sort of.
Unless, until she lets the phones go down.
The phone's good.
Yeah, I'm sure she took the phones down.
So he, the phone guy came and did, we don't need to record this, but.
So what's adjourned then?
That's adjourned.
Adjourned.
Yeah, we're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Eight twenty P M.